Alex, Nate will call it the meeting in order. Looks like we've got a forum. Uh, I don't see any announcements for public comment. Uh, we're gonna invite Calvin Cup to come and speak. Biggest H and A managers for the record.
You bet I can't look here.
Thank you.
Good afternoon commissioners, Calvin Cup, 115 Old Plain Boulevard. I know that there's a new basis and it's been a little while since I've been to a meeting, so I thought I would just take a moment for those of you who didn't know me to introduce myself, Calvin Cup. As I said, I'm the director of Wichita State's downtown aquatic facility that hosted at River Vista and also the head coach for Chaka Roy. And then we also manage boats and bikes, which is the only retail venture that's directly connected to the river. And so obviously we have a good relationship with parks and want to see that continue. So I think it's important for me to be at some meetings occasionally and and make sure that we understand what's going on with you and how can we partner? And it's also, I think, important for people to know who we are. That's why I showed up today, just to take a moment. Uh, real briefly, Chaka Rowing just celebrated its 50th anniversary this spring and hosted our regional rowing championships. And with Chaka Rowing, we are definitely the most consistent user group of the river, being out there several days a week, most of the year. In addition to that, with our only retail venture that directly utilizes the river every day of summer. So we obviously are very interested in helping to continue activate the river and see the river grow and see more people come and utilize our natural resources that we have downtown. And in addition to that, we also have various partnerships that we work to continue partner with festivals in with River Festival, Moles and Water Activities run through our facility, water safety and other things like that, as well as user groups that you probably heard of, Black Canyon River Coalition and Wichita Clean Streams and others. So we try to be very active and involved with that, not just to support our programming, but to see how we can help those other user groups and citizens who are utilizing the river. And that was it.
Please Mr. Calvin.
Thank you. And I can still come to it, don't ask. Hey, this is who we are and hopefully see you down at our facility so we can visit and hear a little bit more about what we do.
Love it. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, we're gonna move through minutes. We have a number of minutes. So we've got June 9th, July 14th, and then a special meeting on July 17th. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah, I would make the motion that I want to make a comment about July 14th, which I was not here.
Yes.
But I appreciated what Shana said, her presentation about how you plan for things.
Yeah.
And I was gonna make a suggestion as well that we include recycling. We have a strategy for recycling, especially so much cardboard and aluminum cans, that if we don't plan for it, it's not gonna happen. But if we put it on the agenda as well as all these other very good plans that we can include in how we operate things. I remember talking with the former director, Calvin, about it and he never got around to working on it. So I just want to put that out there as an intended item or a item of interest.
Cycling.
Cycling as part of our public, you know, operations.
And I wonder if that's something that we can include with, as we're going through the master planning process too. Good part. I don't. Or.
That could be very easily included into that, in that process. One thing that I would want to verify is the complete process behind the recycling efforts.
Absolutely.
Uh, to make sure that we aren't wasting efforts to collect recycling and pay additional fees to have that collected and separated to, did it just be.
And that's why I would say focus first on like aluminum cans and cardboard that is easily recycled rather than plastics and all that other kind of stuff. And all kinds of strategies, like hiring one of the waste connections or whatever.
Yep.
But I know there's already history that some of them just.
Plastics is what. They don't have a market for it. Yeah, most of the markets have cut it off. So but cardboard, they'll take that because.
I just want to be sure that if we're gonna put out the effort, put out the expense to do a good thing.
Yep.
That it remains a good thing all the way through.
I just want to put, say, let's make a strategy to consider that and look at the options.
I like it.
So I would move to approve all of these minutes.
Got motion. Second. Motion and a second. And you have the discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
All those opposed? All right.
We've got some proof.
I'd like to go get those uploaded. I know there were some questions about those earlier on. All right, Katie, you're up.
Just got a quick update about League 42. For those of you that don't know, they lease four baseball fields from us on the north side of McHaddox Park in District One. Uh, that leased area, besides just the baseball fields, includes the bleachers, confession stand, and any improvements that League 42 themselves adds to the property. We did previously have a lease with them, which has been in effect since 2015. It's still in effect, but if we approve this new lease, it will supersede the old one and replace it. Uh, we made just a few changes to the agreement, um, ju- just because, you know, over time, things, our, our working relationship changes a little bit, especially with the addition of two new baseball fields since the lease was initially entered into. So that's why we've revised this. Um, consideration hasn't changed. They're paying us a dollar per year. But the most important thing is that, that we get to then use the fields at no cost when League 42 isn't actively using the fields. Otherwise, it is exclusive to them. This is the area that is leased. You can see the three fields at the top and then the one additional field that they added about a year and a half ago, completely fundraised by them through a capital campaign. Um, the main change is that, of course, it is clarifying that lease premise that now it does include those new fields. Um, they're no longer needing the storage building on site. Um, we wanted to clarify the parking situation with the new rec center being developed um, to ensure that there are enough parking spaces for the rec center users. Um, and then we updated the more standard legal language that we're currently using that we weren't using back in 2015. Um, the rest of the terms stayed the same, including that they're gonna share their copy of their uh, foundation bylaws, rules, their fees, their procedures, waivers, schedules, et cetera, and that, um, the recreation superintendent or their designated, in this case, the brewer rec center supervisor will serve as next official member of their board. And with that, um, I recommend that you approve the new lease agreement with League 42 Foundation and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Has League 42 reviewed it already?
Yes, they have and they have signed it. Yep, they're just waiting for the counter signatures.
That's all the question I had.
Yeah.
What else? I would make a motion to approve the new lease agreement with League 42. Motion and a second. Other discussions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Both same sign?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
He's discussing it, you too though.
Uh, we have. We've got no continuation of prior business, so we've gotta finance a bit. Was there? I gotta start dressing up. Sit next to you, Reggie. Governor, man. Good afternoon. Afternoon, sir.
Sir's gonna run over the, uh, the, the numbers through July? So far, we're looking good. Um, with the revenue looking, um, stronger than, uh, over what we have budgeted, so stronger than what I, um, than what we had budgeted for. Um, and also with, especially with recreation, um, we're making more revenues still, uh, through July than what we did through July of 2024. So still running ahead. And it was on the expense side. We are also spending less on the recreation side than we were through July. Um, so we did the same thing in June and we continue that trend through July. Um, so yeah, doing really well. Looking good on our cost recoveries. Everybody's sitting around the same, the targets, um, the where we want them to be this, at this time this year. Um. Athletics jumped quite a bit from last month. We had a bunch of, you know, as we're gearing up for softball and for football this season, and so all of those helped jump up the, uh, their cost recovery. Go a little bit strong and let's just go into more of the details. Um. The revenues are up. Expenses are steady. Um, we have about 1.4, almost 1.5 million. Um, and our unencumbered cash balance ending at that point, um, it was, I think, 1.2 at this point last year. So we have a higher cash balance than what we did at this point, uh, last year. And that is with even having with our slow, uh, January, February. We have definitely rebounded. And everybody looks good with their cost recoveries. But that, do you have any questions?
Oh, I do have a question. What, um, with our expenses being down on the park side, what's the, what is that? Are there reasons for that? Like, is that efficiency or staffing changes or?
Um. Yes, uh, some of that is going to be because we, some of that is a brewer.
Sure.
We're not paying, um, staff fee for brewers as much as we did, um, last year because we had like about half of the, we paid like the first half of the year for brewer. Um, mowing is, is still pretty steady. Um, I have not seen the huge increase. Um, even with all the rain and everything, um, we have, we got more activity, but it hasn't been crazy as far as, as big expenditures go so far. And swimming pools are looking really good. Then they've, um, they're hitting their top recovery marks really well this year too.
Yes, that's giving my question about swimming pools. If we close them early, what's the hit to income on that? But we're planning for a month early or a couple of weeks early?
So we typically, after we close on the 10th, we would normally go, uh, longer with just the weekend only. And because while with the water restrictions last year, we ended this year, we're consistent with that again this year. And we, as we'll see, some of our cost recoveries went up now, even expecting to see more as we go into the end of the year. So our costs, we would have some challenges after that point when school goes back because we use a lot of these teachers and things as well.
Income and expenses.
I collect both incomes and expenses.
So they, but you did close on 10th and you.
They closed yesterday. The Smash Patch will still be open through the, uh, end of September.
And then also with the swimming pools, um, that cost recovery will go up a little bit. Um, as we, um, as we apply some scholarships, because, uh, the, the Red Cross has, uh, donated, um, basically provide some scholarships for swimming lessons this year as they did last year. And then also we have, um, council member Johnson is, um, using some of the proceeds from the Hyatt funding to do free swim, uh, weekends, um, for McAfee. And so we still need to apply those, those funds. Um, so the cost recovery for the pools has continued to increase a little bit. And then, um, we'll see that go down a little bit throughout because we still pay for some of our admin staff as they continue to work out the offseason. So we'll see them without being offset by, by the pools being open, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, social media.
Wasn't clicking for me. All right, social media update. Here are updated follower count for our social pages. Uh, the winner this month was Master Park, had the most increase in follower count. I think it increased about 400 actually last month. The top post for the parking admission page was about aquatic, as always. This was the, a little reel that they posted to Facebook, um, announcing the last, uh, day of pools being open. Um, they slashed this or lifeguard with the bucket. Right in your face. Um, and that post reached 20,000 people and they clicked the link through to the aquatics page 32 times. Um, so that was pretty good interaction for just the single video. OJ Watson Parks, top host was, um, an announcement about the concessions building getting a facelift. That his new window wrap was designed by our graphic designer Jessica. Um, and it so brought a nice splash of color and invited people into the concessions building. Um, that post reached about 2,000 people, including 10 click-throughs. And that page was actually the only one that saw an increase in overall reach. It increased 27% last month. The rest decreased just a little bit from June to July. Master Park, uh, the top post was a live video that was taken during one of the Summer Concert Series concerts. And that video reached about 4,500 people and was interacted with 142 times. Open Streets, as always, just focusing on the upcoming events that we have throughout the year. So the next event is in September. We're looking for vendors right now. Um, and people clicked through that link to our vendor registration page 13 times. And Golf Wichita, the top post was employed spotlight for our mechanic Jason. Um, that was reached 1,400, reached 1,400 people and interacted with 38 times. And I'll stand for any questions you have.
Katie. Thank you. All right, got a golf update. Oh, wait, creation, I'm sorry. I'm, I got it, my thing. First it out on that. I was just, you know, thinking about, you guys made all this money. I was like, y'all are great.
Thinking about golfing, I know.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hey, guys, it's Monday.
I just clicked. You're a clicker? No, I just.
Have you seen the spacebar for the? Oh, we're gonna start with at Aquatics. Uh, we have 173, uh, lesson scholarships used in 2025 compared to 120 in 2024. Um, we ended up with 201 total swim lessons across all six facilities. Um, we had about 1,150 participants across four sessions of, uh, lessons this summer. Um, continued operation of all six pools, provided required maintenance and daily chemical checks. And anybody wants to know tonight is dog days at College Hill at 5:30. Athletics, athletics is killing it. Let me just tell you guys. So, um, we just had Miracle League. We participated in the NBC World Series, uh, on the 27th. It was a great turnout. Um, both teams and all the buddies were present and ready to play. Um, it was a little warm, but it wasn't too bad because it was kind of early in the morning. Um, but the game provided good exposure for our Miracle League and there was actually quite a few people that were there for the NBC World Series. I gotta take a chance and look at our kids playing. Um, our junior football registration numbers are almost up. Well, it's way up. If you have this now, that's how awesome it is. We're about, uh, 810 people registered already. We're double what we were last year. And we can only see growing from here. Um, Lindwood Rec Center, uh, Lindwood, uh, Rec Center Summer Discovery Program participated in our 2025 Mid-America Credit Union Marketplace. So, uh, the Mid-America Credit Union comes out to our facilities and teaches our kids about financial literacy, basically, throughout all six of the summer camps. Um, the kids actually got to do their own marketplace. So they came up with flyers to advertise their own products. And then they had their parents, friends, family, different staff, actually went to the different rec centers to buy the, so around here, they had some goodies, some cookies and some other stuff. Um, Lindwood Senior Center, uh, members were invited to shop at the market and they actually sold $46 worth of snacks and food. So they were selling them for like quarter, 50 cents, a dollar, $46 is a lot. Um, Lindwood Summer Discovery Council's rock again. Uh, while, uh, while attending a field trip to the Derby Plaza Movie Theater on 7/16, one of our campers, who has a high level food allergy, had an allergic reaction to something he ate, um, something out of the norm of his regular food allergies. Um, camp counselor Jaden King recognized he was having an allergic reaction and was going into antifallactic shock. Jaden had counselor Taylor Harding administer the camper EpiPen, contacted EMS as well as his parents. The camper recovered from the reaction and parents praised our staff's quick thinking and handling of the situation. What we deal with a lot. A lot of our campers have either asthma, um, they're allergic to nuts, uh, KDR, um, bee stings, all that stuff. So we make sure to keep the EpiPens, um, locked away in a room where you can get to it within 30 seconds. So. This was a long one, but I had to make sure I put this on here because what we do makes a lasting impact. It's kind of small, so I have to read it for my camper. Okay, um, Lindwood Summer, um, so Lindwood Summer Discovery Council is actually rock. I mean, all of our campers rock, but this one stood out to me. On 7/14/2025, one of our campers had an emotional breakdown and began yelling that he hated his life and he wanted to kill himself. His mother had recently informed that she and her, she and her husband were getting a divorce and they had just told their son about it the night before. After the camper calmed down, um, the, from crying, we had him kneel down. Um, the head counselor and the director went and talked to the kid. Um, the counselor Taylor Harding asked if he was having suicidal thoughts. He said yes. When then asked if he had thought about any suicidal plans, he said, yes, I'm gonna take a knife from the kitchen and slit my throat. Obviously, the camp counselor and the director, Lisa Claus, took this very serious. While Taylor stepped with the camper, she contacted his mom and relayed all this information to her. Um, Lisa asked if she could come pick, uh, come and pick him up as she thought he really needed parental support. Both his mom and dad came to pick him up within about 30 minutes. Lisa provided the suicide protocol parent notification sheet to both his parents when they picked him up and told them that they, we were here to help him. Um, she also followed up on the KDHT protocol that we have to submit. The camper's parents took him to a psychiatric evaluation. He was not admitted, however, they did recommend counseling for the camper. The camper's mom described this as a cry for help, which responded to, and she was so incredibly grateful for our involvement. She said she believed the positive relationships that Lisa's camp staff has with her child created a safe environment for him to have a meltdown and talk about this. She said she and her son, um, her son had previously resisted counseling for the past year. However, this situation opened him up to the idea and they're planning to contact, uh, comcare to give him schedule for regular sessions to deal with his parents' divorce. This is a true statement testimony of the positive impact we make in kids' lives. I couldn't even probably, I'm a staff in the situation. And just so you know, that kid did get enrolled into comcare. Great Plains Nature Center, uh, despite the rain on Friday, July 25th, uh, Moonlight at Me at the Great Plains Nature Center drew over 200 curious visitors for an indoor night of discovery with the lights out. Guests explored hands-on station, highlighting bats. Hmm. Better than snakes. Um, um, uh, nocturnal, uh, moss, uh, oh my God, snakes and mammals. Um, the respect that shifted indoors didn't dim the fun. It only added to the nightmare atmosphere. This event probably, uh, powered by energy and we're looking at even more offense with this. Um, 48 creature feature auditorium programs were offered in July, reaching a total of 102 adults and 164 children. Creature feature programs are engaging and interactive audio, uh, auditorium programs that typically include meeting, a animal ambassador outpost, Amanda knows no snake. I like the hawk and Mason Terps. Um, the naturalists led 12 summer, uh, summer field trips to the nature center, reaching 30 adults and 209 children. Summer villages focused on water, earth, air, and consists of one hour long naturalist guided excursion into the Crispin Tree Park, complete with a nature hike and activity. Evergreen Recreation Center, um, Evergreen Recreation Center, uh, had an average of 83 kids registered for summer camp for the month of June. They had the most so far. They actually ended up with 130 registered for summer camp. Um, they had to cut it down a little bit because their license is actually only for a little bit of 100, 105. Uh, Evergreen Recreation Center is saving its second session for the Tai Chi, uh, Tai Chi class this summer and they have 28 students signed up. Um, a really cool program that Evergreen Rec Center, uh, did with their summer camp kids, uh, was Trash Panda. It's initiative this summer where the kids picked up trash. They picked up over 193 pounds of trash this summer at the park. Yuri, you know about that, huh? Any questions?
No snakes, right?
No snake.
Yeah, because we're sharing.
All right, now we got golf.
All right, good afternoon. Um, I was supposed to be playing in corporate challenge golf tournament and I got rained out, so. Here we are. All right, so, um, go through the numbers real quick. More of the same. Uh, we're still everything we can handle right now. Um, year-to-date rounds comparison, we're, comparison, we're at 115,000. We were up 109,000 last year, so we're up slightly. Uh, July alone, we, we did about 2,000 more rounds than last year, even with the branding. Uh, cart rentals are up considerably, just over a hundred thousand dollars over, uh, this point last year. Food and beverage is slightly up, uh, from last year, about $26,000 better than last year. The driving ranges, even though we've been closed a lot because of the rain, uh, we're still nearly, we're barely behind last year. Uh, if we can avoid a little bit of rain, it wouldn't take long at all to make that up and, and be way ahead. Um, merchandise settled. We're, again, we're just barely down, but that's mainly, you can see at Auburn Hills just because of the, the deal we had last year still. So, um, pretty happy with those numbers. Total revenue, uh, we are 250, just over $250,000 up over where we're, we're at this point in last year. So just over 4.2 million revenue this year, uh, 851,000 in July alone. So again, after the start of the year, very happy with where we're at this point. Uh, private funding, um, continues to, to go up as we have green fees and car rental money that filters into this. Uh, so all those look very strong. Um, we've done a few projects. We're getting ready to put the RFP for the irrigation at Mac, God forbid, that should go out in the next two weeks. Uh, we've got it all pretty well put together, um, just finalizing everything now. Uh, so that's a, that's the next, next huge project. Uh, I did want to kind of point this out. We know first of the year, first of the month, we had no days that we were open. So just looking at April, May, June, July, four months, uh, 2024 versus this year, those same four months, we're up about 6,000, 6,500 rounds. And then the revenue, we have, uh, about $405,000 more this year during that down period than what we made last year. So, uh, really, again, happy with where everything's coming together. Uh, we did finish our, our summer junior programming. Uh, we still have a lot to go for the year, but just wanted to kind of holler at that a little bit. Uh, we, of course, have several programs, which are junior golf foundation, firstly, two of our main partners for junior golf. Uh, in, in-house, we do the Witchaw, the Competitive Junior Tour, which saw record numbers by far this year. Hook a Kid on Golf, Group Lessons, Junior Player Development Camp, uh, just a lot of different things. We, I think so far, we're around 1,700 kids that have went through our programming and that's by the end of the year, uh, will be well over that 200, or that 2,000, uh, mark. Um, wanted to point out, last week, junior golf Wichita, i- it's almost insane what happened last week. So if you look on the right, Grant Schmidt, US Kids, um, world championship, not, not regional, not United States, he's in the world championship. He's won that two years in a row. It was at Pinehurst. He won the nine-year-old division. This year he won the 10-year-old division and won by a lot. Um, and that's a, that's a, that's a huge, huge thing. Uh, then on the left, um, London Estrela won the PGA Junior Championship, which if you turned on ESPN at any point or anything, you probably saw Tiger Woods' son competing and he almost qualified. He was in that tournament with Tiger Woods' son and beat him by a lot. Uh, he won by, I believe, five shots. Uh, that's a, that is the tournament of tournaments for junior golf in the United States. So both of them coming out of Wichita is amazing that that happened in the same week. So very proud of, uh, junior golf in, in, in the Wichita area. Uh, yeah, that's all I have. I'll answer any questions.
I've got a few questions.
Okay.
Uh, the sod at Auburn on 18, is that installed or seems like we've been talking about that?
Yeah. No, um, we, we ended up kind of shifting on that a little bit. The, we put the ride down in a lot of those areas and it somewhat filled it, uh, much better than what it was. Um, and that sod, we, we have a small window where we needed to get that down. Unfortunately, we, we lost our superintendent.
So what about the back of 18, it takes for the, like, kind of a sod farm, kind of? That kind of.
We're, yeah, so we ended up using the sod that we had reserved.
Okay.
We replaced 14 mosses at Sam, uh, which desperately needed.
Okay, I'm playing. Okay.
Yeah, so we, we did, we did a huge project there. We got all that sod on the ground. It's, it's taken now. Um, I, I think we're gonna kind of regroup and do that industry. Um, I, I think we're going to kind of regroup and do that industry next year. Um, the unexpected loss of superintendent out of nowhere came through.
Oh, where was that at?
That was Auburn, so we're in the process of hiring a new superintendent.
Wasn't he just a few months?
Two years.
Oh, that's, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, second question, percentage of your golf board that plays in leagues? Or how many? Probably roughly two-thirds or more?
So, yeah, um, seven. I think there may, I think five out of seven.
Probably just Malad, maybe. I don't even know if he does, but.
I don't think he does, and I, I don't. Justin Graham also, I don't believe he does.
That makes it just kind of difficult to address the league situation when they're all there, okay?
It, it does.
Percentage of league players that are members are, you know, roughly, what you most, you think, that play?
Eighty-five percent, probably, yeah, there, some of, most of the leagues are all members and then we have like the senior league at Auburn has some, some green people. Soon means slow, that's something's turned it in, um.
At least my next suggestion or maybe thought process, because I know you've already addressed it, so I don't know how long that goes, where you can only be in, I think, two leagues, is that how you kind of?
You can only, each league can only play two days.
Each league can play two days, okay. So basically what I'm saying is, I feel as a full-paying member that I am a full-paying member with a junior membership. And we've discussed that privately, but. If, if there was a way to implement, if somebody wants tee times guaranteed, you know, throughout this whole season, I don't know how often they're getting put in there, but basically, I can book seven days in ahead, that's it. But people paying the same amount of money as me can book throughout the whole summer, get really the prime premium spots. I mean, I'm up at five A M. just to play on a Sunday to, to make a tee time. If there was a way to make their monthly fee, like a premium membership of say twenty-five dollars extra a month, that might weed out some of the leagues that are just putting together three foursomes so they could call themselves a league. I don't know how much you have of that now. And it would, I would, I would exclude the men's clubs, so I mean, they would, that would, I would exclude that just to keep the barking from getting too loud. Just, just trying to figure out this league thing, because I know it's different than most places in the, in the country.
At one hundred percent, so you said it has been addressed, in my opinion, it has not been addressed.
I agree, I agree.
I kind of hit a wall, um.
Yeah, and it's hard to get a good discussion on leagues when they're all in one.
Yes.
Sorry.
Uh, one thing I don't, I, I don't want to create the optics of, we're saying, well, if someone can pay for it, we're going to give them an advantage. Uh, you know, uh, to me, it should be the same for, for everyone, uh, and just don't want to feel like, well, we're going to offer a higher membership for those that can afford it and they get special privilege.
Yeah.
I, I don't like the op, and even though I don't like the optics of that, uh, but I think over the winter, we have a lot of discussion, a lot of figuring out.
Yeah, I'm really, I think the best option is to do the men's clubs and then, I don't know, I mean, where do you cut it off at? But I know you've got some that are thirty years old, you know?
Exactly. I'd say in my opinion, and I've shared it with the board, is I would like to see each club road its own league, you know, men's league, ladies league, couples league, and seniors league. That's it. We're in control, anyone can sign up. Um, but yeah, you're talking about getting rid of leagues that have been going since years before I was even born, so.
Even if we moved them to the way from the, the, especially in summer, but.
Yeah.
To where they don't get, you know, give, give that, put a window of a couple hours for just the general public that, that don't want to play in a league or don't know twelve people that we could, we could finagle putting something together.
You and I are going to say that.
I know we are, I know y'all, I just don't know if you're going to get anywhere else. I don't know if you're going to get in every board you have.
That's a more frustrating topic since I've been here and I'm definitely not finished with trying to.
Um, and then a quick suggestion, and I've mentioned this to you before, but the, the tee markers at Tex, too many people playing the white tees, too many people playing the blue tees. Probably not that many playing the blue, but I, if you just change the blue to black, the bu, the whites to blues, the golds to whites, you're going to get people playing the right yardages. Because the yellows at Tex, which are the senior tees, are two hundred yards longer than the whites at Auburn and people don't play yardage, they play ego. You know, I can't play the senior tees. Uh, we did that at Reflection when I was a member there and it worked perfectly, everybody just. Uh, and I don't know what you do with the golds, if you just move them to the reds and, and have it stacked up there, because right now you have the silvers and the reds together. Anyway, I didn't mean to slow down this meeting.
Oh, you're great.
So how do we, so how do we help you?
Yeah, well, can I keep going with these suggestions? I'll make the most.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to come to your meeting.
Yeah.
But it costs me a lot of money to walk out of work for, you know, for the day, but if you guys are ever on a Monday, lucky to come to your meetings, but it, it's just expensive to do that and I self, I'm self-employed.
Sure, sure.
Walking out at two o'clock to get out of our bikes, it is.
Actually, maybe.
Have you thought about having a, an evening meeting? I know you have.
Like, yeah, maybe have a, an off, off-time meetings for.
Yeah. I think the texting is a, I mean, it's a great pace of play. I just finished in three hours, twenty minutes walking.
Good.
Uh, it's just, I just see people hitting three woods into par fours. And I mean, I'm sixty-one and can hit the ball a decent distance and I'm standing near the Colts, yeah, it makes, it just makes it more fun.
Right.
And it's just a long golf course.
It is, uh, yeah, that's.
Especially today.
That's wild.
It went over the day.
They're not in the established ladies league because it's, it's long, they don't enjoy it, so.
Yeah.
It's a big golf course.
Well, I think you're doing, I think you're doing a great job and I don't know what the process is to get you a raise. But no, I've already, um, I've been in discussion with a couple council members, I don't know how we can do it, but.
I'm definitely going to move that meeting.
Yeah, there you go. I think, I, I don't want to lose what you've done to the golf program, the golf, the condition of the golf courts, they're as they've ever been, and they're going to get better. Uh, I'll, I mean, Sims is going to just explode next year and then Matt will fall, Matt's better already. And the bunker project you're doing is fantastic. I think it's smart and.
I appreciate that.
And that Texas, um, I put Texas Fairways up against just about any country club except for a couple.
Right.
And they're fantastic, yeah.
Well, I appreciate the support, definitely.
If you want to share a little bit on where we are with the, uh, superintendent out at Auburn, where we've gotten applicants from?
Yeah, we, we are happy, well, we have one more day of interviews, uh, tomorrow. Uh, we've had applicants from, by far the most applicants I've had for any position, we, we had applicants from Texas, Florida, uh, Oklahoma, Kansas City. Some local applicants, some internal applicants, so it's, we, we've got a very tough decision to make at the end of the week. Uh, but that's very promising to see, you know, we, I posted this position two years ago and probably had one-fifth of the amount of applicants that we had this summer.
Who was the young man we hired? What was his position from, I think he came out with Terradyne?
That's who left, yes.
Oh, he's only been there, he's been there two years, it seems like he just, I'm behind on my meetings, why did he, why did he get a lead? That's a very short period, Tom, just to. Oh, good opportunity just could pass out or?
I, I think, I think it's an opportunity outside of the golf industry and I think he was just kind of, yeah, I don't want to speak anymore.
What's, what's something to do?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a big job, it's a lot.
It's probably the highest pressure of all of them.
It is, with the homeowner being, the way this course layout is, it's a big job, a lot to do, so it's, yeah, not saying he didn't do a good job, but it takes a special kind of person to be able to manage all that.
Lots where pay is, I mean, it's always the big thing, but that, that's where pay helps out.
What is the pay? Uh, the range is, don't quote me on this, sixteen-nine to ninety-four, I believe.
The C forty-one?
Yes.
It would be.
Right on it.
It would be forty-three to ninety-one.
Forty-three, okay.
And what is, what, what's the superintendent at Terradyne? But he, I mean, if you had to guess, did he get?
Um, probably just over a hundred.
Kind of on the lower end, oh, yeah.
It is, still, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we. Yeah. Good.
No questions for Justin?
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Great cycle, thank you.
I'm breaking. All right, Gary, you're up, sir.
Put it for you, just in, do the PowerPoint.
Looking at the wrong series pattern.
To your right.
Yep.
Other green one.
Yeah, the green. There we go.
All right. Jesse made me want to, uh, take some pictures of my set and show some champions out there. Uh, four three has been busy, you all know that. We talked about last time with the storms that we had, May, June, uh, it just encompassed those last few months. Um, seven hundred and sixty-two emergency responses in, in July. And I don't know for sure in terms of the day, day collection, if that includes or does not include the three hundred and thirteen that we passed off to Public Works. And that was, uh, locations that didn't require any, uh, area work, they're just, you know, picking up brush, limbs, logs, uh, from the storm. So, uh, again, a huge shout out to Public Works and the crews that helped us with that. We appreciate it so much and that cooperation. Um, but the works continue, uh, we are still not a hundred percent cleaned up from those storms. Um, we're getting closer, uh, by a significant margin, but the emergency stuff, the stuff in the roads, the stuff that's, you know, was on a house or a car or blocking the driveway, that is all complete. Now we're trying to clean up what's in parks and in, you know, less traveled areas that we know we need to get cleaned up, but. Plenty of work still out there, but in the meantime, we still have all the pruning calls and all the sump calls and all of that. And I know that John is working diligently to put together both a sump removal contract as well as a tree and sump removal contract. Um, so we're, we're working to do that. We, we've got the, some pre-tractable funding to make that happen, so we're trying to do both types of contracts this year. Um, that's really to help our backlog out. Obviously, we are, uh, ready to hit any other emergency that's needed, uh, we hope that's not going to happen, uh, but we'll see what the weather, uh, gives us, so. Um, our construction team, uh, busy as usual, uh, they do all kinds of things, uh. And we talked about this last, uh, month about the Bayley Street corridor, the fence that goes along there, uh, as soon as we get it fixed, somebody runs, uh, through another section or even the same section that we just finished. Uh, so, uh, trying to get wrapped up with that. Uh, we do a lot of support with our athletic fields, uh, replacing foul holes, fencing, um, uh, benches. Uh, we deal a lot with the, uh, safety seating, the name of that is totally escaping me, but that's not safety seating, the top right word, bleachers, that's the right word. Uh, we do all of that and we, we have an entire evaluation of all of the bleacher assets in our system. And, uh, are developing a plan to replace those and become, uh, more in compliance with, uh, safety regulations. So that, that's an ongoing, uh, project. Um, we do a lot with, uh, memorial, uh, benches, uh, we remove a lot graffiti, uh, Herman Hill, Brock Badland, Sits Riverside, there's just a few places that we remove graffiti. Um, the waste receptacles, College Hill Park, they're rusting out, uh, they're very difficult to deal with, very difficult for the sav to operate because things were just falling apart, they, they were quite old. So we've got ten of those replaced, there's at least ten more to replace, uh, they aren't cheap, so we're going to have, probably wait for another budget to do it even over there. Um, but that will improve both the, that improves the look, uh, of College Hill as well as, uh, the functionality of the refuse service. Um, other ticket item here, um. Some of this on here that I do want to touch based on it, we have not forgotten about the playgrounds that were affected by the flood, uh, in, in June. We have contractors lined up to, uh, complete all the repairs on the playgrounds that were affected. Uh, we are having to be on the contractor's schedule, so obviously that wasn't a planned project. Uh, so we're just kind of had to fit those, that in with the contractor that we're dealing with. Uh, but once we get that work done, the results will be good. We're just, uh, hoping to have, uh, those playgrounds open by, if not the end of August, uh, by the first part of September. So we haven't forgot about it, it's just, it, it's just kind of a long. Um, one thing that we did have happen, uh, was one of the features that was at the new club park, uh, did fail. And so we're working with manufacturer to get a replacement for that and figure out exactly why it failed and how to keep that from happening again. So, uh, Brett is taking the lead on that. Uh, we do a lot of support for activities, uh, there, the list here is quite long, um, whether it's providing picnic tables, stages or, uh, hauling loads of compost for banter. We do all kinds of things, do a lot of work with, uh, aquatics and supporting the, uh, functionality of all the features there. And again, I'd already mentioned, uh, uh, memorial benches, um, but yeah, we're going to continue on with vandalism reports, safety inspections on playgrounds. Those will all continue throughout, so park maintenance, a lot of work goes on there again. Um, we touched on this last week, or last month rather, uh, where park maintenance was really helping a lot with, uh, storm damage response. Uh, and so with all that rain came a lot of vegetation management issues, uh, so we've been working really hard to get back into a good cycle with our mowing of our, uh, internal surfaces. And then keep our, uh, contractors held accountable for the work that they're doing. Uh, there have been a, a few slowdowns in the, falling through the cracks with some of our contractors that are being corrected. So I don't know if you guys are, are hearing from residents, but, uh, we certainly hear, uh, a lot of things, but then we also find some of those things and have to get it corrected. And, um, our team's not shy about being able to communicate with our contractors and, and hold them accountable for what, what they need to do. Uh, we're also doing a lot of work in the background to improve our, uh, mapping systems and the way that our maps communicate, uh, areas of responsibility to our contractors. So that is being done in the background, that's going to be available for our next contract, uh, season, the new contracts will be, uh, bid and awarded this winter, going to affect next season. We're looking forward to that. It's a lot of work now, and we're looking forward to it. Um, our nitrogen weed crew, they're doing their thing, lots spraying going on, a lot of just, uh, grass control, uh, irrigation, uh, they have worked really hard on, uh, city hall, satellite water walk. They've done a lot of replacements, they've put in a lot of new controllers and those new controllers, uh, make it easier to, uh, manipulate the system and also conserve water. So we're glad about that and those improvements. Um, we've had to increase our presence in terms of capacity with, uh, uh, initiation of the MAC. So we've had to put in, um, several more containers around that area. More containers means more volume, more volume means more time, more time means less of something else somewhere else. So, uh, it's, it's a, it's a bouncing act and we're trying to walk that line. Um, as usual, several of our poly carts were melted around the fourth of July, um, whether it was malicious or not, it's immaterial. The pile of melted plastic tells the story of what happened, but we just don't necessarily, we don't know why. It could have been that someone was just disposing of, uh, spent fireworks or it could be that someone really wanted to burn down our car. Either way, the cars burned, so, uh, that typically happens around the fourth. Occasionally it happened outside of that timeframe, but we typically get a few melted around then. Occasionally it happened outside of that timeframe, but we typically get a few melted around then. Um, we always have, uh, they have vandalism, poly carts, uh, that just continues to be an issue that's particularly an issue downtown. Uh, and we're trying to work with, um, uh, downtown Wichita on some initiatives to, uh, improve our, not just our presence, but the facilitation of trash collection in the downtown area. Uh, so hopefully we can, uh, develop some good relationship and partnership there. Uh, so that's being looked at to improve the appearance of our downtown corridor. Attender camp crew, we've, uh, uh, two hundred and thirty amps so far this year. Uh, they got their new mini track, uh, loader. And I'm anxious to see that in action. I haven't seen it in action yet, but it's good that we got that. It really makes getting into tight places, uh, more efficient, and, uh, efficiency is the key.
I've noticed that as soon as you clean some of them. I was at Chapin on Saturday, and I notice there's more tents again. So, you know, more than there typically has been. How about that? So.
Is that north of Chapin or in Chapin Park?
In Chapin Park. Just set up one. I try to open parks these once a month. I get all.
In the in the process, uh, when camps are observed, that needs to go through the, uh, reporting process, whether it's C click fix or, you know, if there's something really going on, you know, on, on one call. And then there's a set of processes that, uh, PD, housing, uh, other departments go through to try to work with people, uh, in, engaged in that humanitarian aspect of the very complex problem. Uh, and then when all of that's done, then Park gets it. Uh, so but you have just identified one of the more frustrating parts of the entire complex problem is just as soon as we're done and can look at a spot and say, man, we did a great job.
Hot two's not on, on during the weekend, so it's not like you can call them on a Saturday, so.
Right.
So. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We got more trees? Heard the city manager said no, and the city council said yes.
We have some trees to plant. Uh, they are trees that we have held since we were told stop, you know, cold. Um, I have really high hopes for those trees. There's, I want to say over four hundred of them. I don't think there's over five hundred. So somewhere in that, that age, but commercially, when you're ordering trees, you need to be about a season ahead.
Yeah.
So if we didn't have those already on hand, we would be sparingly right now. Uh, but if we can get back into the, the tree planting process, uh, we are just gonna be thrilled with that. And, uh, that's to me, and, and you know good and well that I'm forestry nerd, uh, we do so much cutting now. Uh, it's almost disheartening, uh, a- as, as, as a forestry person, day in, day out, day in, day out, day in, day out, to always see that loss. But to get back into planting, I think will really help morale our staff to have that regeneration effect of knowing that we're, we're putting back what we're not just taking away.
Right. I'm, I'm not in the weather prediction business, but I think we need to plan for good weather, for good rain for the next.
Since you knew about that, I'm gonna leave that in your hands.
Is there an opportunity if, you know, they're not gonna be planted on city property for residents to plant them on theirs? I know that was a conversation we had a few years ago, or it's hard for us to determine to, you know, to have.
I don't know if I had your section of that.
Now, give a little bit of an update on it. I know that, uh, Arrow was at the last meeting that we had for the evening as well. It was one of the questions that came up about replanting. And there's gonna be an update on the nineteenth council meeting on looking at where we are with the water restrictions. And then once they announce that, they'll be able to tell what our plans will be able to be moving forward, potentially planting some trees possibly before the end of the year. So we'll have more information out to the nineteenth on what.
But if like two hundred residents said, we'll take a tree, you know what I mean? Like.
You mean to have like a, a, a city sponsored tree giveaway?
Or, yeah, or we'll go buy a tree to one of your four hundred trees and plant it our, you know what I'm saying?
The four hundred that we have, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can sell those. I don't really.
Enough places in the parks.
Yeah, I know, but if the city is.
We're certainly looking at.
In parks, you know what I mean?
We're, we're certainly looking at places to plant them that are either A, already irrigated.
Sure.
Uh, so that we don't have to take additional resources to then go water them. It's already irrigated. So that's our primary focus right now, just because we're in the situation we're in. Uh, so we're just trying to be very strategic about that. Uh, some of them probably won't go into already irrigated places. We do have the capacity to irrigate them, however, um, when, when I'm thinking about irrigating a tree or watering a tree, it is that once a week. And so that's within our, our restrictions anyway. We're really not gonna be watering a newly planted tree more than once a week. Uh, that's just not part of our process from even before our restrictions. So, uh, you know, we would go from once a week for the first year. Uh, in the second season, uh, we would go every ten to fifteen days. And then the third season would be every, you know, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty days that we water that tree. So, uh, our goal is to get that tree not dependent on our irrigation, but just natural, uh, rainfall. So, yeah. We would get a source of water before we move.
It was cool to be good.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, um, and I think Brandon is with us virtually.
Yep, he just logged in.
Hey, Brandon, can you, you got an update for us from the Park Foundation?
Chat. I mean, he's here. He hasn't entered anything in the chat, but he's virtual.
Well, we'll come back, Brandon, or you can, if you want to email us, Brandon, your, your update. But I do want to give Reggie some time to give us some updates as well. I don't have any updates. It's Monday. Happy. But, uh, Reggie, I know there's a whole bunch of things that you've been working on and including, uh, Park Master Plan and all those fun things. So the floor is yours, sir.
Well, uh, the first, uh, one we're gonna give an update on is the Park Master Plan. Going to the point now that we're gonna be looking at, uh, moving forward with the application on a selective vendor. Uh, so we're hoping to have something finalized to potentially, uh, move forward starting in the September, October timeframe. And we're looking at roughly twelve to fourteen months in that process. And part of it, we will be engaging, of course, the Park Board and the Park Foundation on what that looks like with us moving forward. And it's gonna be benchmarking where we compare it to other cities, see where we're investing our dollars that we actually have, and being able to look at some of those things that we've had some challenges with being able to manage and partner. It is evaluating our existing condition of our facilities and see what we need to reinvest in those to make sure that they're to the standards that the community wants to expect. And a big piece of what we, uh, talked through the process was what the, uh, potential vendors is setting realistic expectations for the community. Uh, because the last thing we want to do is collect a lot of information that it goes on the shelf, and we can't really do anything with it. So that's our goal with that, and we want to make sure we have you guys engaged in that process as we move. Uh, some of the other things I wanted to highlight that, uh, I know that you're aware that we did the transition with, uh, youth football. We're partnering with the USD two-five-nine, and as Angela reported earlier, that's going really well. We've doubled the numbers that we had for the previous year. And we're gonna be intentional about as we move forward, being able to in- include some of those things that we envisioned with that. With making sure we have the academic support behind that the kids can be successful in the classroom, to have a good experience when they're there on the weekends. Uh, we're looking at incorporating in announcers and video in the games and things that, they just so the kids have a real true experience with being able to be on, uh, on the, uh, high school fields. And I know Leho has been involved in another project that we're really excited about, uh, is the Barry Sanders Football Complex at Dr. Glendy Park. So we've been real strategic in trying to, uh, make sure that we incorporate the family into the plans, uh, so that they have a voice and they have committed to help support. And Barry Sanders Senior has designated Barry Sanders Junior as being our person that is going to help guide us with our fundraising efforts. So they're in the process now of looking at a potential donor that may be willing to, uh, help sponsor the facility. Uh, we'll have a little bit more information on that once we have more details. But he's also working behind the scenes. We're, uh, getting the campaign on, offering to the NFL, uh, websites, uh, to raise awareness as well as working with, uh, a local billboard company that's gonna do some awareness campaign and kind at some of the, uh, billboards throughout the city. It just so happened that Barry Sanders nephew is one of the managers at this location, and we're getting this all in kind. Uh, another big piece of that that we're working on, uh, as well is that, uh, the city-to-city tour, uh, with the city of Wichita is in Detroit this year in October. And Barry Sanders Junior is facilitating a meeting, uh, with our Park Board President and our council member to have an opportunity to meet the lion's ownership as well as the Ford Foundation that's affiliated with that to get their support moving forward, uh, with the project. So we're really excited about it, getting a lot of, uh, uh, good support from the family and putting together a solid plan on how we can move forward to make that become a reality. So one of the things that, uh, we learned from some previous experiences is that we, uh, may not have a gaze to family as soon as we, uh, in the beginning process of it. And we wanted to make sure that we're intentional this time around that we had them involved from the beginning. So that's exciting. Uh, just some of the other things that we were mentioning, uh, that we're seeing, our summer care program went really well this, uh, year. Uh, we've, uh, gotten good participation with those. All of our numbers have increased from the previous year. Our golf numbers are looking great that we're doing, and our park maintenance team is doing an outstanding job with the resources that we have from managing our homeless and camp and cleanups to being able to deal with the storm incidents that we actually had this year. And one of the things that's a positive note for us on that as well, I think Gary and his team has been able to fill more positions that we've had, uh, vacant compared to more than what we've been able to do probably in the last three or four years combined. So that's a, a good, uh, uh, thing for us that we're able to grow and be able to maintain and, and get more people on board to help support what we're doing. And I'll give a little bit, uh, about the Park Foundation as well. So they're getting ready to go through their Park Master Plan process right now also. Uh, Gary and Angela and I, uh, met with, uh, WSU who's leading those efforts earlier today to kind of get some feedback on how we envision working with them and that partnership, some of the things that we want to see incorporated in the process. And one of the big things that we wanted to make sure that happened was that, uh, with Brandon being a representative of this body and how we can work together even better, with being able to identify where our needs are and how they can help support it moving forward. And then putting together a process of how we move forward to make those requests to, uh, to be able to support them. So that's something that we're excited about and think is gonna be, uh, a good resource as, as we move forward. So those are the major things. We're also now opening up. If you guys have any questions about anything that I may, that, uh, kind of been lingering that we've been dealing with, uh, especially coming out of the summer and dealing with the drought. Happy to answer that for you guys if you have any.
That's right. Pretty good reports from Botanica about their water recycling. They're pretty excited about it. The owners, they got private donors.
So that was able to work out. We're working publicly to get that in place. So I know that they're in the process now of, uh, looking at doing some, uh, security cameras there in the parking lot. So that just went through on last week for, uh, approval to move forward. So that'll give some additional safety measures there and to, uh, cover that area.
Hey, well, I don't have anything else. Reggie, thank you. Thank you to the staff. See y'all in a month.